I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of the Town of Corte Madera for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020 into session. Laura Carr, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Kunhardt.
Here.
Councilmember Vazio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Buckman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Here. Okay, and will you join me for our pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't need any mosquitoes up in here.
I don't think that was an actual mosquito, but it was.
Oh, no, I've seen several in the buildings.
Large. The first item, or the first item is open time for public comment. You'll have three minutes to comment on items not listed otherwise on the agenda. Please line up if you're looking to do that. Dr. Bundy.
Bob Bundy, 89 Golden Hind Passage, a member of the Corte Madera Community Foundation, which has long had an interest in sort of cleaning up, especially on our wetlands areas. We sponsor the coastal cleanup for Corte Madera every year. And so, on behalf of cleaning up the area at the end of Industrial Way and along the railroad right-of-way levee that's walked on and ridden on by cyclists, I want to thank Bob Revazio on behalf of the pedestrian and bike committee and Todd Cusamano for taking active role in getting this area cleaned up. In particular, they put Michael Moriarty, our code enforcement officer, in charge of finding out who owns these abandoned vehicles out there, who's parking RVs out there, who's, you know, living in vehicles out there, and getting the area cleared out as well as getting the chain-linked fences that were on the Corte Madera property gone. So, all of you have done a good job. I think this eventually is going to be a safe routes to school. It's going to be a great walking route for people, and if we can just get Larkspur to take down their fences at this point, it's going to be a big success. The gate that is going on at the end of Industrial Way to block cars from coming back there will hopefully, or should really eliminate, people being able to go back there and dump or abandon vehicles, but still allow access for hikers and cyclists to go through there. So, thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kenton Wolfers. I live at 46 Padera Boulevard, and I'm coming to talk about the proposed roundabout at the corner of Madera and Tamil Vista. We just learned about this recently and became very concerned because, basically, the roundabout points cars right at our house, endangering our family and creating more noise and traffic in front of our house. We did meet with Jared, the, one of the Public Works individuals, and talked to him about a revised plan. But as I thought about it more, and I did more research, what I came to see and think about is that, I'm not even sure why this is being proposed. I know it's safety for cars and pedestrians, but, actually, for traffic flow as much as anything, but there's a lot more impacted areas in Marin. As a matter of fact, there's almost never traffic at this place, and there's almost never pedestrians there. So, what's being proposed, I think, is a $1 to $2 million project without a problem, and I think that, I've actually surveyed a number of people, and a very high percentage of them agree with me that this is sort of a big budget, looking for a problem to be spent on. Maybe they're just, maybe it's being proposed because there's work being done down on Tamil Vista, sorry about that, which also doesn't seem to alleviate any traffic at all. It just seems to be, it just seems to be, sorry about that, it just seems to be sort of like cleaning up that road a little bit, maybe making a better pedestrian walkway for people that work at MMWD, but really, there's a major traffic problem near Andy's Market at that light and further down, and putting a roundabout here is really just going to put people into that traffic quicker. I also spent some time observing the new roundabouts in San Anselmo, and I know that, conceptually, maybe they're a good idea, but what I saw, and I have videos and photos, is that people cut across the roundabouts, pedestrians don't use the sidewalk, don't use the crosswalks. It's really, doesn't turn out a lot to be the way you think. Also, you've got from Tamil Pious down to this intersection, it's like a highway. There's no stopping or slowing down. Cars are going, the speed limit's 30 miles an hour, cars are going very fast, and pedestrians are at risk there earlier on. So, I think it's a plan that is not really a good solution for this intersection. I don't even think there's a problem at that intersection. Matter of fact, what we were provided with was that there was one incident there in five years, so it doesn't seem like a good place to be investing the town's money, and it has a very, very negative impact on our personal property. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Well, is that covered?
How did Plan PAC on Thursday?
Yeah, it's going to be back in a minute.
Yeah, we'll be back. We're not going away.
Kenton, thank you for your comments. Something I just wanted to say for the benefit of everybody is that you should be aware at public open time, we can't address directly to something that you bring up because it's not on the, already on the agenda, whatever, but that we all take careful notes, and there are lots of people who are capable of doing things that are listening carefully, including our town manager, our planning directors here, we have a member of the planning commission sitting in the audience. Please be aware that we all listen carefully to everything everybody's saying. We just can't, we're not allowed to engage at this moment.
Yeah, no, we're here to share our concerns and share the public's concerns, and, you know, I don't expect this problem to be solved right now, but, you know, we were, I mean, like literally, my wife hasn't slept for like two weeks since we found out about this, so we're here to.
We hear you, thank you very much.
It's very important for us. Thanks.
So, my name's Catherine Wolfers, and I also live with Kenton at that same intersection. And thank you, Sloan, for telling us about the individuals in the room who are here to listen. We will be back on Thursday, and thank you, Todd, for also engaging earlier when we walked in and just letting us know that this is still in the planning phases, because when we talked to Jared at the planning department a couple of days ago, it felt like it was very much a go, and the plans that we were looking at were indeed what was going to happen, and that the project was out for bid and ready to start June 1st. So, I haven't slept for the last week because I'm terrified that, looking at this plan, you know, the roundabout is 10 feet from my daughter's window, and right now, we have trees in the front of our house, we have trees on the side of our house, and they're all, they would all be torn down. That's our privacy from the street. And so, I just ask, you know, going forward, that we be involved in the process. You know, I can't believe this process has been going on for two years supposedly, and we had to find out about it from a next-door post. Nobody even knocked on our door, and, you know, this is right outside our house. So, that is my ask, that we can be involved in the process, and we'll be here on Thursday. Thank you.
Hi, thanks a lot for this open mic. It's really, it really means a lot to have this opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that the town council is aware. I understand Thursday is another meeting about, about the roundabout and other public works projects, but I would like the city council to be aware of this project. In, I live at 46 Madera, my name is Carolyn Svensson, dues-paying citizen of Corte Madera. I pay my taxes, follow the rules, but as Catherine said, we don't feel like there has been any consulting with the neighborhood, with any of Madera Gardens, about this project, which, in my opinion and experience, is only going to increase the speed on Madera Boulevard. Right now, for 12 years that I've lived there, you see a policeman posted on and off, Lark, you know, Twin Cities policemen, waiting at the corner to give tickets to people who do speed through and who don't stop, and now, we're going to give them a heyday. They just get to go through the roundabout. If you go down Civic Center Drive and look at that roundabout, if you go down San Francisco Boulevard in San Anselmo and look at that roundabout, you will see people driving right over the roundabout at the speed that they were going at and never stopping. The largest concern I have is if you think through where citizens are going to cross the street out of Madera Gardens to get to town center. You have many, many seniors, you have many families with children, and this roundabout, you know, really inhibits the ability of any of us to cross that street unless we go all the way down to Tamil Pious Drive. In the middle of the block of Madera, there's another crosswalk, again, with no stop sign. So, it's hard for me to figure out what made the planning board, the planning department, what's the benefit statement? What made them think that this is an important project? Who are they trying to please? As Kenton said, it does seem like, like a project without a problem, and I'd really appreciate the city council being aware of it and maybe looking into it as well. Unfortunately, we may not be able to be here Thursday night, but we'll come back for other opportunities to talk about it, and we really appreciate your attention to it. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Eric Svensson. I live at 42 Madera Boulevard, and I am also concerned about the roundabout. I think that you want to do, what you want to do on Madera Boulevard and Tamil Vista is to slow traffic down. I can't believe that this roundabout is going to do anything but speed it up. I also support the statements that are made previously by my wife and my neighbors. Thank you.
Cheryl Longinotti, 8 Tamil Vista Boulevard. I live just north, four houses north of the site we're talking about here. I've had three near misses as a pedestrian at that intersection, and so I do think it is a real safety concern. There's only lighting, I think, on one corner. The others are dark. I think something needs to be done, and especially, traffic comes off the highway onto that leg of Madera, and people are still at freeway speed, and they don't recognize they're coming into a commercial slash residential area. I think a roundabout potentially could slow the traffic. If it makes it safer for pedestrians, I think it would make it safer for the nearby houses. I understand the concern. I'm looking for, I'll be at the pedestrian bike committee meeting on Thursday, and I'm looking to see how it improves for safety for pedestrians, and I think if it does that, I think it'll improve and be an asset to the neighborhood. So, I'm waiting for the details on the design.
Just a couple of things. Jim Robinson, 25 Ash, Corte Madera. First of all, I want to thank the town council and the town manager for the implementation of our permit parking on Apache. I think that it's been in place for a number of months since schools started, and I think it's been a very effective tool, and appreciate the effort the town made to solve that might be a little problem, but was a big problem in Madera Gardens. We appreciate that, and we think that's working well. Also, I wanted to thank the town council, it's probably long overdue, for the decomposed granite pathway that they improved along the High Canal Path. I walk that every day, and I think that's a real great solution to that 10- or 15-year discussion about what to do on that pathway, and we really appreciate that. With respect to the roundabout, that's been in discussion for a couple of years, I recall, including at the Bike PAC, B-PAC Committee meeting. I do share a concern that was expressed tonight, that I think that it's important that these be vetted in advance so people are aware that these projects are out there, and I think one of the disadvantages we have of having money available through the Transportation Marin Authority, they go through and design these projects without people really being aware or cognizant that they're coming along, and maybe, this may be a project the council wants to do, and maybe it doesn't, but I wonder about the cost involved of coming up with these preliminary engineering designs. And I recall one instance where we're actually talking about a project in front of Marin Joe's Restaurant, where they talked about removing parking, removing the sign. I don't know that Marin Joe's was cognizant, aware that this planning was going on, but I think that if a plan gets that far along and that, that much legwork on, I think that those that are going to be affected by it should be aware of it so that our town manager can protect himself from incoming, from the residents and concerned, concerned citizens. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Next, we'll go on to presentations. The first is an update on the Town of Corte Madera's Neighborhood Chipper Program, and it will be presented by Marla Orth, the town's resilience coordinator.
I'm Marla Orth. I made a presentation about six months ago about our chipper program. This is an update for the six months since the end of June, June 30. We've gone through a lot of changes in that intervening period, so I want to use this opportunity to bring everybody up to date, give you the latest numbers, talk about what's, what's working and things that we really need to improve upon. So, the first is, how are we now defining the chipper program? Because it occurred to me in the first six months of our program, we do great things if we just do a chipper program, but we have to really get the neighborhood much, much more prepared, and that means an awful lot of things, from going back and assessing kind of what the need is, going through the entire process and prioritization of what needs to be done. And one of the things I learned in the first six months is the need to empower the local neighborhoods, and given that opportunity, they will step up most of the time to do the right thing. The presentation, as you're going to hear it in my very fast-speed, 10-minute presentation, is the lessons that were learned and the accommodations that we actually made. So, how do we do that? How do we put these practices into play in this particular community? Because this is a unique program. It's homegrown. It's very grassroots level. So, clearly, it is to increase our defensible space. More importantly, it is, because of lessons learned from fires in other areas, improve the ingress egress for not only first responders, but for the residents, because there was a lot of things that just didn't go quite according to plan. And then, in that process, identify evacuation routes. How can we improve that? How do we improve the vehicular sightlines? If you've had the opportunity to go up and down Meadow Suite Drive, we did a very major mitigation there, December, January. It was a horrible street. There was always collisions between cars and bicyclists and what have you. You go through there now, I feel very safe. A fire truck can get through, and I think Ruben would notice it correct. So, we've really done some things to enhance the safety generally in that whole area. But the biggest part is, how do we keep this participation going? So, our focus really remains on those very high-risk areas that is tantamount to our public safety. And how do we do this? And I'm going to describe a couple of programs that have been put into place since we last spoke. So, one is the mitigation of the town-owned steps, lanes, and paths. That's the evacuation routes. It's how can we improve lighting? How can we improve communications, et cetera? Basically, how do we improve communication so the people really do the right thing? So, the program as it existed for the first six months was really Neighborhood Chipper Program. And that was where I would go out to the community, basically hustle an NRG, an HOA, a group, to say you wanted to have a Neighborhood Chipper Day. And this is sort of the Tom Sawyer approach. We're going to make this really fun because we're going to have a chipper party. And guess what? It worked. We got about a 40% participation. My goal now is to how to get the other 60% involved. And then, of course, we resurrected the chipper weekends, and those are very well-received by the folks that live in the flatter parts of town, because they don't have the amount of green waste that some of us have in the hillsides, which is, if you're going to take, for example, we live on Meadow Crest Drive, it would be like scooping out a mountain with a teaspoon. I mean, it's just, there's just such a volume up there that really needs to be dealt with. So, we did that all through last summer, and very successful, and we decided that we would start focusing on evacuation routes. And so, we piloted up on Meadow Crest and a couple of the side streets, see what worked, where were the complaints, where were the successes, what could we do more efficiently? So, we have embarked on a town-wide street evacuation program, and I'll go through some of the numbers of what we've already done. But basically, this is 15 feet vertical space, 10 feet out to the perimeter wherever it is possible, notwithstanding, there's a lot of encroachments that have been put into place, like parking pads and what have you. Step lanes and paths, I've talked to you about, there are 42 in town. I actually moved my emphasis from step lanes and paths, we, I think we've completed 11 to date, to focus on the streets project. I'm taking advantage of the dry winter because we all know that it's not if, it's when it is going to happen, so I am pushing as hard as I can push right now to, to address that. Town-owned properties, we've got a lot of little properties in town, trying to abate those, trying to do those in a descending priority basis. Ruben frequently hands me court order abatements, and in that capacity, I actually manage the abatements from start to finish. We have voluntary abatements, where people want to do the right thing, but they just don't have the wherewithal, frankly, to do it. And then, we have a small grant program that's kind of going through an evolution right now that will help local residents do the right thing, and we would give them assistance in the form of a small grant. So, we'd go in, we'd assess what needs to be done, and we would help them actually get that accomplished. So, what we've done, like in the last year, are a bunch of initiatives. For those of you who have not taken the first aid classes, and I'm looking at some people on the town council who haven't, it's a really good class. We've gotten over 200 residents trained. I hope to add another 200 this year. We've actually invited the local businesses to participate on the same terms and conditions as local residents. We've also, you might notice around town, we've got some new AEDs placed strategically throughout the town. We've replaced the one that was not operational in the community center. And then, we also distributed 4100 Stop the Bleed kits, and those were delivered door-to-door. So, everybody has at least some concept of what we're trying to do. And then, there's a lot, a lot of communications newsletters for the businesses as well as the town. And then, as you know, Pete and I were very instrumental in getting the trailers in town. That's something, an initiative we started like 15 years ago. We now have nine trailers. They're pretty well-equipped. They continue to be equipped through a little foundation that is actually managed through the Community Foundation. So, I think we have nine of those, and then we have dispersed firemen's first aid kits that can be used in the neighborhoods. Each neighborhood actually has one. We'd like to get more of that dispersed into the community. So, what we do is, if you look at it comparatively to other initiatives, this, this works. It's something that is very, I call it high-touch, low-conflict. We try to give people the carrot. We don't take the stick. We try to get them to do the right thing. So, it's, it's a lot of hand-holding. It's a lot of organization. It's a lot of door-to-door. It's a lot of explaining people that not only is it the right thing to do for themselves, but it's right for the whole of the community. So, there's a lot of scheduling, there's a lot of integration that has to occur during this entire process, and it keeps me quite busy. So, the reason I think this program is successful is it's voluntary whenever possible. And for those of you who are not familiar with the program, using Measure F funds, if I organize a neighborhood, an HOA, an individual group, they do the work. I work with them to come up with a day or two or upwards to, in the case of Chapman Avenue, I think we did seven or eight days, where we would just kind of do a rolling chipping event. And then, we will pick up the materials, we'll chip them, and we'll dispose of them. So, that's at no cost to any residents, and that's about, right now, because the dumping fees have gone up precipitously, that's about 40% of the cost of any abatement. So, it's very, very well-received. So, what I'd like to say is, while everybody's been talking about it and having a lot of press releases and whatever, we've quietly been doing it, and we, we keep pushing the ball down the road. And again, rather than use the stick, we go out to the neighborhoods. We brand their chipping event to them. If they have something within the context of the program parameters, we accommodate that, because by doing that, that gives buy-in. And so, it's pretty well-received. I'm already scheduling 2020 Neighborhood Chipping Events. The whole concept of peer pressure is starting to work, because if somebody does their hard work, they're looking around at their neighbors to say, well, why aren't you doing the right thing? So, we try to be very personal, very targeted. As I said, a lot of door-to-door, spend a lot of Saturdays and Sundays walking around the neighborhoods, seeing if I can find somebody that I can engage. And then, also trying more so to try to do better collaboration with the other stakeholders, very problematic. County Open Space, MMWD, Caltrans, they are not into this at all. They do cut and run. They cut things, drop them into the canyon, leave me with the residual, then Todd and I basically get all the complaints when we had really nothing to do with it. So, we're trying to engage them in the dialogue. I've had a lot of meetings now with PG&E, and we're trying to coordinate all the activities on a street-by-street basis. So, if they're going to come in and do their annual abatement, they coordinate with us. So, we're trying to engage them to do the right thing as well, and it's difficult. It's probably one of the biggest challenges I have right now, trying to do this program. Just to briefly go through, because I am going to go through a couple maps, we had a lot, a lot of activity, probably twice the activity that we had the first six months of the year. So, these are just neighborhoods where we went in and we did abatements, either Neighborhood Chipper Days and/or we actually started doing evacuation route abatements. That program actually started in late November. So, this kind of takes you through the end of the year. We pushed right up until December 23rd, and the weather was permitting, we just kept on going, and we took, the crews took off two weeks, and we're back at it again. So, this is a little hard to see, but in, in the print that will go on the website tomorrow, the blue dots are all the cubic yards by neighborhood that were removed, and then, the orange ones are ones that are immediately pending. As an example, we're going to have another parking lot chipper event on May 2nd and 3rd. The yellow is step lanes and paths, and then, the red is the grant for the Christmas Tree Hill development that was done, independent of anything that I'm currently doing. This, again, is a little difficult to see on this thing, but, and I'm just, I'm basically just going to hold it up, but we have already done 12 streets, and we've grabbed the biggest ones, like Casa Buena, Meadow, Meadow Suite, all the side ones, all. What I'm trying to do is go through town on a logistical basis, working from the south, working the wildland urban face, interface, and then moving as quickly as I can into some of the other neighborhoods. So, in here, the red ones are already completed. The blues are going to be completed in the next month, and they're after, we'll see what the fire season's going to bring. I have no idea if we're going to be able to continue this project or not, depending on what we run into. But we've already very aggressively pursued this program. We started it as a pilot November. This is all the work that's already been done, and this is not even the middle of, or it is the middle of February right now. So, the goal here is, again, make sure that we have adequate ingress egress in all these evacuation routes. So, if you look at what we did the first six months, and I've gone back to cubic yards, and the reason I've done that is, it's really hard to calculate reliably the tonnage, because some of the loads are wet, some of them are not. So, I went back, just to be super conservative, I went back to cubic yards. So, comparatively, you can see that we did about one and a half times of what we did in the first six months of 2019. All told, it's over 7,000. All told, it's over 7,000 cubic yards removed. And for those of you that don't know what a cubic yard is...
Grab the microphone, please.
Peter was kind enough to make this visual, Todd thought it was a bad-boy box, but this is a cubic yard, okay? A lot of people just don't comprehend kind of what that is. We have removed over 7,000 of these, 7,000. That's equivalent to 1.3 football fields, four feet deep, of compressed as well as chip material. That's a lot of flammable fuel we have taken off the hillsides. Pretty good for a day's work. So to try to get a return on investment analysis, oops, I skipped a slide. So you'll notice that the cost per cubic yard increased in the second half of the year. That is because of the evacuation route program. There's a ton, I mean, our chipper, excuse me, our dump fees have more than tripled since we took that program on. These streets have not been mitigated for a really long time, if ever. It's very laborious, it's very intensive work, it's a lot of work to try to manage the traffic when we do these. We try to minimize the downtime for any residents or any flow through traffic. But even at that, the cost per cubic yard is still very reasonable when you consider it includes the dumping fees. Those dumping fees right now, probably on a per-week basis, we're probably spending $2,000, $2,500. It's a lot, because we can't chip and broadcast in the majority of these areas, plus the waste is just so crazy that you wouldn't want to chip and broadcast because you'd have a new crop next year, and we're trying to avoid that. So this particular effort, instead of doing it just a one-time abatement, have it last a year, have to go back, do it again next year, my goal is to make this a four-to-five-year project, at least on the trees. Yes, there's going to be some other nominal stuff in terms of the brush that comes up, but we've been pretty aggressive in doing this. So blended cost for each yard remove is about 25 bucks, roughly speaking. When you compare that to some of the other projects we are familiar with, it's a bargain, it really is a bargain. So I'm just going to scan through a number of abatements that we've done. I've got volumes and volumes of pictures. Nobody gets excited about this stuff except for me. People say, "Can I see a picture of your dog or your kids?" It's like, "Oh, would you like to see my chipper program here?" So I can bore the best of all of them. But I think the bottom line is, you can drive through town now and really start to see some pretty significant results, especially if you go to some of the HOAs. Cory Meadows, you go to, I think we did about a 50% abatement. The Parkview, that's about a 70% abatement, we're in round two. This is Madera del Procedio, oh my God, we took out so much broom. This whole hill, as an example, was just complete with wall-to-wall broom, and this is what it looks like now. So it's the before, the after, it's significant. And yet, all that said, here's one, filled completely with broom, it's now cleaned up. So all that said and done, we've really made our mark, but I have to tell you, we still got a whole heck of a lot to be done. So I want to make a shout-out to you guys because you supported this program, and that's why you have those lovely bouquets in front of you, which is making everybody's eyes itch, because every single one of those little plants in there are among the flammable species, and I collected those from my projects. So even though they're pretty, they're very flammable, and this is what we kind of live and breathe every day of trying to get rid of it. The only one that's not in there was pampas grass, went out to harvest it yesterday for it, and I had an asthma attack, I thought, "I can do without it, I can just do without." You're starting to see a couple of the pictures, and I'm sorry, I was talking over myself. This is kind of topical of what we run into in an abatement. It's nasty, it's thick with just so much mixed debris, all of the flammable. And so thank you, and thank you to Lorena, she's my right-hand person for my graphics, and I'm not tech-savvy, so she makes me look like I know what I'm doing. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Marla, fabulous work. Where are we going with this material?
So where it's clean material, and I have a good space to put, so I define clean as oak, in some cases, some pine, and if there's a location where I can broadcast it, no more than three to four inches, I try to do it. Most of the materials on this first pass-through, it's mixed materials, it's everything.
It's this, okay.
It's that and worse, you know, and just garbage, and just things that have been kind of thrown in there for a really long time.
And so is it redwood landfill, where is it going?
So largely, yes. I am still trying to work out a place in town where I can do the clean chips, where people can come help themselves, but with the loss of the parking lot area over at the village, I still don't have a location for that. But it is, it's very hard, because Ruben's going to be on my behind if we broadcast and it's too thick, and I'm creating a secondary fire hazard.
Questions or comments? I guess we should get public comment. Any more council questions?
Thank you. Come on, guys. Don't you like your arrangements?
Well, I'm only doing questions.
That's okay.
The only question I have is, what is your main impediments going forward? Particularly, I'm thinking of PG&E and...
Well, that's a really big impediment, because they are under a mandate and of an opinion that all they have to do is protect their asset. And so they'll come in and literally fell trees, they feel like they're responsible for anything four inches or larger, and they leave everything to us, and they shove it down canyons, and then that generates a bunch of complaints. Similarly, is trying to coordinate with Caltrans. The property, there was a picture at the very end of Coke Road as an example, it's a fire hazard. No matter how good a job we do with this program, if Caltrans does not clean that up, somebody's going to flick a cigarette and we're going to lose the whole east side of town. So there's that. There are some people who are very misguided, as you might imagine, who I've had more than several situations where people think I'm coming to get their guns. I'm not kidding about that. And I try to explain to them that this really has nothing to do with that, or that it's just, it's time-consumptive, it's so labor-intensive to educate people. And that's three-fourths of this program, is educating people. And then if they don't do the right thing, then that's Ruben's job, and you know, it's above my pay grade.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I will tell you is, this has been a grassroots effort, built from the bottom up, and really, Marla, it's been her vision, and it's turned into something really amazing. I mean, this is her resume over the last year. And I think the biggest challenge for us is, right now, we're running this on a contract. And there's pros and cons to that, and I think where we're headed is a recommendation to council to make this either a part-time or a full-time position, and it's really not about money, it's about supporting the person doing the work from a liability standpoint and continuing this program into the future. It's just remarkable, though, what has been accomplished in a short time.
Any more council questions?
I do have one more, I'm sorry. Early in your presentation, Marla, you mentioned that we have had available grants for helping individuals. Is that Measure F money?
It's all through Measure F. It's largely either shut-ins, elderly people, fixed incomes, they want to do the right thing, they just don't have the resource.
Don't have the capabilities.
Right, and so they're pretty modest. We've, some of the involuntary, the court-ordered abatements, those are large ones, but for the most, the grants are under $1,000.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
Oh!
Thank you.
I just have one. I just have one. Comment? I have a comment.
Okay.
Marla, I just wanted to say thank you from all of us at the council. I'm going to steal a quote from Ruben, who I'm in so many meetings with, I can't remember anymore where I heard it, but he said about the chipper program, "I've never seen so much fuel come off a hillside so fast," which was great. So thank you, we had the pleasure going around with you a few weeks ago, and several other members, and saw what it's been done, and it is really nothing short of remarkable when you go out there and you actually see it. I mean, the canopies have been lifted, trails are open, so thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this, it's so important, really appreciate it.
Well said. Thank you, Marla.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks for the cubic yard.
Okay. Have you ever seen one before?
Not like that.
The first time I've seen one done with PVC pipe.
What are those? I've never had them before. Okay, the next presentation is Chief Norton from the Central Marin Police Authority? Or are you a department now?
We're authority. Legally authority. Real quick, before I start, I did want to just take a quick minute and acknowledge Councilmember Bailey, and thank him for being a member of the police council. He's rolling his eyes at me. Todd said he didn't want a proclamation or anything, so I brought you just a few pieces of swag, and I just wanted to say thank you, since you missed our last meeting due to a business emergency.
Did he get you out his tickets and...
Probably not. So we give you our official patrol patch, an official SWAT team patch, very special. And this is kind of cool, this is an organizational values challenge coin. I'm the only one who has those, and I give them to employees or people who go above and beyond and exemplify our organizational values. It's one of the things for all your support on the last year and a half.
Michael, that's actually very meaningful. Thank you. I appreciate it. And don't ever embarrass me in public again.
Okay. There wasn't a proclamation, you know, I thought I was okay. So I'm going to, there's a lot of slides here, and I apologize for that, so I'm going to go quick, feel free to stop me. This whole PowerPoint will be put on the, it's part of the towns packet, correct, online, and then we'll be putting it up on our website once we go through all three towns, you're the first, so it'll be probably a couple weeks before it gets up on our site. First calls for service, I'm going to, this is 2019 numbers, but I'll verbally tell you how they compare to 2018. First up, kind of troubling, we had an increase in calls for service of 3.25%. It doesn't sound like a lot, but that does average about five more calls a day. So we went from 121 calls a day up to 126. Corder Madera's share of calls for service stayed exactly the same, at 26%, we just had a little bit more. Like I said, I'm going to go fast. Once again, our shopping centers were our main calls for service, and as we get to later, I'll show you, we did have quite a disturbing uptick in property crime that is basically being seen all throughout Northern California, and it's mainly automobile burglaries, and we call them commercial burglaries, but they're basically high-end shoplifting, where a lot of property is taken, or tools are used, or schemes like that. We saw a little downturn in the amount of calls for service at Corder Madera Town Center, but it really still had an increase in crime there, unfortunately. And those were the two spots in Corder Madera, I believe, was Corder Madera Town Center and the Village right there. Most of our calls for service, though, of those 44,000, you can see, do not make up necessarily crime calls. It's a lot of extra patrol requests, that's where people call us to neighborhoods to do traffic control, or we have an uptick in crime, and we're just driving around and looking for bad guys, and a lot of traffic stops and citizens assists and things like that. Top calls for service in Corder Madera, like I said, are not necessarily crime. You can see it, it's extra patrol, traffic stop, assist fire, so that's pretty much anytime fire gets dispatched to something. If it's something we can help out with and maybe get there first, we'll go out and help. It could be, you know, something like a cardiac arrest, or something as simple as, you know, a kid falling off a skateboard and he's hurt, or something like that. If we feel we can get there a few minutes earlier, we'll roll out there and help out. In terms of our traffic stops last year, you'll see the bulk of these are actually in San Anselmo, and what we did is, meeting with the three managers, we made a conscious decision last spring in 2019, we had a big uptick in San Anselmo with traffic accidents. And it's not just traffic accidents, there were accidents where people were getting injured, some serious ones and some minor injuries, but nevertheless, we realized we needed to kind of make a big push out there and make our presence really be felt, and see if we can improve the situation. And you'll see when we get to traffic collisions, that we did have some help there. So our amount of traffic stops for actual Corder Madera stayed about the same, which was 1,105, but we had a big jump in San Anselmo. The number of stops we made out there actually went up 73% last year. And like I said, that was done in direct correlation to the accidents. So since we had so many accidents happening, we're like, what can we do as a police department? I can't go out there and re-engineer the roads, but we can do a ton of enforcement and see what happens. And it's kind of mixed bag, you know, sometimes it helps, sometimes it doesn't. The big thing is what we were doing out there was speed enforcement, because that was what was causing, our primary collision factor for a lot of our accidents. In Corder Madera, you can see where the bulk of our stops are being made. When it says the Town Center or the Village, that's not us looking for someone going seven miles an hour in a five or something like that, that's just where the stop ends up. So it can be the, for Corder Madera Town Center, that can be like the stop sign that was mentioned earlier, where that proposed roundabout is, that is a sign that gets worked a lot, because we do have a lot of roll-throughs there. But honestly, a lot of it that we're focusing on now is, Tamalpais is always a big one. It says 780 Tamalpais, but that's not counting all the other spots we pull people over on Tamalpais. And we pull, when we work Paradise, we basically work from the whole length of Paradise, so there's a lot of landing spots, I'd like to say. And realistically, those are the two main places we're working, and once again, we're really focusing on speed and where we have accidents. So that is, Tamalpais is traditionally, we've had accidents there and the Tam over, so we focus there. And then moving in parking, these are citations, not related to stops. Overall, we had about the same number of citations as last year. We did have a slight drop of about 100 in Corder Madera, but an increase in San Anselmo. Parking, once again, very little citations in Corder Madera regarding parking, I always get asked about that, but the main reason is, there's no downtown or two-hour zones, so we'll see an uptick with the implementation of the new residential spaces. We've been out there at least twice a week, proactively going out there, and it's been kind of quiet, I hope, it's been quiet at the towns end, so trying to find the sweet spot of not having to use manpower to go out there every single day, but to make sure kids aren't out there abusing it at the same time. And then reports, this was kind of another troubling one. We had an increase of 22% in reports, which went from about seven reports a day to nine. It doesn't sound like a lot, but reports generally, a report call will take anywhere from one hour on the short end up to three or four hours, and I can attribute this uptick mainly to just the increase in property crime. All our property crimes always require a report, whereas meeting with a citizen on a neighbor dispute, we can resolve that in maybe 15 minutes, and we don't have any follow-up or anything like that, we just kind of talk to everybody. In Corder Madera specifically, we had an increase of 38.9% of reports. We took 779 in 2018 and 1,082 last year. So this is where the bulk of our reports are. No surprise, Corder Madera and the Village, huge uptick, like I said, all over Northern California regarding car break-ins, but it also can be unlocked vehicles, and we also saw a big uptake in like professional crews coming in, and what people would call a shoplift, but sometimes there, it could be the, you know, the Apple Store, some of those highly-publicized ones, but other ones you don't hear about, like Sephora, you know, we have a lot of calls out there, because it's very high-end stuff. A handful gets you a lot of money, and you can sell that anywhere. It can be eBay, but most likely, it's like a fence, it goes to. I think those are the only two in Corder Madera, yeah. And then major crimes, do you have that remote? No, I have it right here. Let's see. The big things just to point to is the burglary. You can see the 2018 stats for Corder Madera here and the 2019. Burglary, these are not home break-ins. When we say burglary, these are car break-ins or commercial burglaries, which are those shoplifts where there's extenuating circumstances. We had an increase of 65%. And larceny and theft, which can be the unlocked vehicles or grand thefts, we had an increase of 56% there. And even vehicle thefts, you know, it looks scary, 183%, even though that jump is just from six to 17. Really, this is the concerning part, and it's across. You can see it in Larkspur as well and even in San Anselmo. You see that big uptick in those automobile break-ins. And then these are other crimes. These aren't broken down by city, because I wasn't able to do that with our software. But you kinda see some other trends, too, that are starting to pop up, which kinda correlate to the property crime. We had a... Too many remotes up here. We had an increase in narcotic offenses from 2018 to 2019. You can see an increase across the board for all, whether it's paraphernalia, under the influence of about 50%. Probation violation arrest cases, we had an increase of 66%. You can see crimes against police. These are people fighting with us or running. We had an increase of 100%. A lot of like, you know, DUIs, kinda flat. Battery, domestic violence actually went down a little. Threats went up. And then these are misdemeanor thefts. So, these are like your unlocked vehicles. You can see these jumped up quite a bit as well here. And then also, your disorderly conduct, those are the drunken public who are just so gone, they can't take care of themselves. Those went up 63% as well. So, we've been quite busy out there.
Do you distinguish among different kinds of drug offenses?
Those are... People always ask me, "Does that include marijuana?" And no, it doesn't. They're narcotics. But we don't have that, whether it's heroin or methamphetamine. Those are all clumped together when it comes to statistics. And frankly, it kinda goes like this. You know, we saw a ton of methamphetamine, and then it went away. And now we're starting to see that again. And heroin was really popular, and now we're seeing that. And pretty much everything is having some... A bit of fentanyl mixed in as well, unfortunately, which is very dangerous. And then one more number that I haven't really... I found this year, which I wasn't able to show before, is just in total amount stolen. It's kind of interesting. You can see like the financial impact. And a lot of this would be, you know, let's say Lululemon, the tights store in Village. If I go in there and, you know, I run out of there with a stack of tights, doesn't look like much. It's cubic foot, right? We're talking cubic yards. A cubic foot of Lululemons is like $15,000. Sorry. Thank you, manager, for that clarification. But you can see the dollar figures, you know, went up about $800,000. So, it's a lot of, you know, it's not the car break-ins where they're getting a massive loss. They might get a laptop, or some of those bikes are expensive. It's really the commercial retail theft where they're getting a lot of property. And then, once again, just kind of, you can see our number one offense in Corder Madera is burglary, but that does break it down a little bit. The ones I'm always most concerned with is residential. It's... I've had my car broken into twice when I lived in San Francisco. It's not fun. It sucks. Never had my house broken into, and that's just a higher level. I mean, I think we can all agree with that. That 15 number does include things, though, like a garage being broken into and a bicycle taken and things like that. It's not all complete ransack jobs. But that number stays pretty flat year to year. It's usually about one per month, we average. But once again, a lot of auto burglaries, a lot of commercial burglaries. And everything else that we're really doing in Corder Madera, you can see revolves around some type of property crime when it comes to taking reports. Traffic collisions. So, we had 725 collisions in 2018, and we took 748 collisions. So, it sounds like it got worse, but I will show you one number. It's about the same, but one thing that's interesting is when we go to this and we look at what type of collisions those are. You can see the number one spots. These are all non-injury. This is like someone backs into your car and doesn't leave a note. Could be two people going for a spot, just kinda like causes some damage, but no one gets hurt. The bulk of these two are that. East of Francis Drake is kind of both. We do have some injuries there, but we do have a lot of that kind of ferry terminal issue, where it's low speed happening inside the ferry. You can see most of these are parking lots. This is just people walking in off the street. That's our police station. We didn't actually have 12 accidents in our police station. Our officers are a little bit better than that, but like the hub in San Anselmo, we do get some injury accidents there. But the one thing that's nice is when we look at this number, our non-injury accidents went from 387 to 430. But our minor injury accidents dropped from 71 to 54. That was a decrease of 24%. And our major injury accidents, these are the really bad ones with hospitalization and things like that, that dropped from six to three. So, that was kind of a good one. And then in Corder Madera specifically, we had three major injury accidents in 2018. I don't know what's going on over there. We had zero this last year, which was good, and our minor injury accidents stayed about flat. And really, the only spots where they weren't parking lots in Corder Madera were the TAM overpass, we had four accidents, and Paradise and TAM, we had four accidents.
Mike, we were having an allergic reaction to the... That's why there was the commotion.
I've been dying ever since I walked in here.
Thank you, Marla. You're fabulous.
I saw that yellow...
Really nice. Making my eyes water.
Chief, is there any way that you can attribute causes to the Tamalpais overpass accidents?
The four there? No, we've always had. That's actually pretty light. I think when I started here, Todd, what would you say like...
The highest.
Yeah. How many accidents would you say we had on the Tamalpais over back in like the early 2000s? At least one a week. Probably 50.
Is it... Do you know... Do you have any sense whether it's visibility or speed or...
No, we'd have to actually pull all the reports. I mean, like I said, there's four. I don't even know if those are injury. My guess is those are probably an inattention. It could be speeding, could be inattention, because all of a sudden you crest it and people are stopped. But we also... Sometimes we get kind of stuck with the CHP accidents, too, where they're coming off the off-ramp and trying to beat that yellow. And it's really kind of, it starts in CHP, but ends up in ours, like right where the impact happens, so then it's Corder Madera's. But four really is not bad there. I don't feel it's really... Those are speed-related. They used to be back in the day. People would really go moving over that. And you know, the speeding issues, too, people, you know, will tell us. I don't know if any of you saw it, but we recently purchased two temporary police radar signs. They look like the public works signs, and we had one mounted out here for two weeks. People don't know this, but we got... That gathers data, too. So, we recorded the speed of every single vehicle for two weeks going by. And I expected it to be much higher, because I hear stories and I see things. And it was, at least at this spot where we put it, it's almost like not an enforceable area. So, we moved those around. We'll probably move it down eventually down to the other end of TAM. And we're just trying to find that spot where after two weeks, we go, ah, this is where people are really flying, and this is where we deploy our people. So, we're trying to get smarter, because we don't have more resources coming. So, we have to get smarter with what we have, so the more data we have, we can target specific things. So, people get frustrated and go, "You need to come out to my street. This is where the problems are." We have to look at where the accidents are first and foremost. What are those accidents? Are they little parking lot dings? Okay, that is what it is. Are the pedestrians getting hit? Well, that's important. That's where we're gonna focus. And then what can we do to control those? Is it speeding or not? But that was my last slide.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mike. Your reports are fantastic. I have two questions. The first one is, the response times are remarkable, right? I mean, how does Central Marin Police do in their response times compared to sort of like other areas? And the second one is, this one I don't think I know the answer to, and I'd be curious. How... I understand there's been an uptick in a variety of crimes. How do we do in Central Marin compared to the larger Bay Area or the state? Is it consistent with that pattern throughout other parts of California?
Yeah, you kind of... Okay. So, for response times, honestly, a lot of that is time of day. Right now, if someone has a cardiac arrest in Corder Madera and they call, we'll be there probably within 60 seconds to 90 seconds.
Yeah, I've had multiple people call to tell me that the response times are remarkable.
Now, if you were to call us, I don't know, 5:00 PM on a weekday, it just depends where our units are, right? It's really traffic-related and what the type of call is. If it's an emergency, yeah, we'll put our lights on and we'll go flying there. But if it's a, you know, my house got broken into, I'm not sure, we have to follow the laws, and it might take us five or 10 minutes. But usually, we... I think our response times are as good as anybody's, if not better. And it's because it is a concentrated area. You know, we're not spread out. Like, obviously, the sheriff in West Marin, it might be 30 minutes just because of how huge West Marin is.
Right.
It's really what it relates to. And then your other question was about...
How do we compare this? I realize there's been an uptick in a variety of different... How does that... How do we do proportionally compared to the rest of the state of the Bay Area?
You know, it depends. I mean, I would say like Corder Madera does poor compared to Fairfax, because it's tucked in pretty deep, right? Or West Marin. We do very good compared to, you know, Richmond or San Francisco, or maybe even Sausalito, just based on where you are. Corder Madera is intersected with Highway 101. It's a major artery, and it's one of the only arteries for here. And it's kind of part of this triangle where you have the two bridges. So, what we found is when we do catch car burglars in our town, we have property from San Jose, from Fremont, from San Francisco, from the East Bay, commonly. When they catch, then we get calls, and it's San Jose Police, "Hey, we got a guy. Is, you know, is Madero del Presidio in your town?" It's like, "Yeah." Okay, well, they have stuff. So, they're kind of doing this loop, if you draw a circle around the Bay Area. And they're not straying too far from the freeways, is what we found. We did do a lot this year, and it seemed to help, because these numbers, honestly, like 50% of them probably happened in the first two months of 2019, those auto burgs. And then it's kinda trickled off. I don't wanna jinx it. It could just be luck or whatever. But we spent a lot of time. We met with every single shopping center in our jurisdiction that is near 101. So, the two main ones here, we also went out to Country Mart in Bon Air and Larkspur and met with their owners, met with their security teams. If you've noticed, they've all, at this point, installed on their light poles, just simple signage that says, "Hey, lock your valu... Keep your valuables hidden," right? And you just kinda go, "Whatever." But that is really what causes this, is people leave stuff in the open and their cars get broken into. If they just secure it, cover it, or just something, take it with them is the best. So, that helped a lot. And then we also met... We trained all the security guards. We offered them free training at our station. It was like a two- or three-hour training where we talked about kind of best police practices for preventing crime or witnessing crime. Because we kinda found out they were just kinda doing loops through the shopping centers. You know, they weren't sleeping on the job, but it... They're repetition. We watched it. And we're like, "Okay, you need to like double back and zigzag." And really, prevention and being visible is the number one thing. And a lot of people don't know it, but if you see us out at like standing in front of the Apple Store, that's actually something that Apple contracts with us to do. We do not just do that out of the goodness of our heart. They compensate us, and our officers are compensated. But it's kind of a win-win. If you talk to Stan Hoffman out there, he loves it, because when we're working for Apple, the whole crime in the shopping center just goes down. And we've also done things like, you know, cover the mic. It's not a big surprise. But we put dummy cars out sometimes, which is where we'll drive a car over there. That, we found, doesn't work that great. We've had cars broken into about 20 feet from our dummy car, which is always like a little embarrassing. We're like, "No, the officer wasn't sleeping. There's just... It's a dummy car." But it's just a patrol car that we park in a visible area. They're kinda on to us. We're just... It's a cat and mouse game, and we're just trying to stay a step ahead of these.
Thank you.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
I was just curious, the increase in larceny theft. What kind of crimes are those? You said that wasn't shoplifting?
Was that under... Oh, these don't have page numbers, do they?
And then also...
Is it reports other crimes?
Yeah, reports major crimes and then reports financial loss. It says also $2 million for larceny theft.
That's everything. So... Oh, I'm sorry, for larceny theft?
Yeah, what's the majority? Is that like people going into stores and taking stuff, or what?
So, in this version you're looking at right here, that would be... It's kind of a grab bag. It could be your bicycle being stolen off the back of the car, you know, laying down. It could be, in this instance, it could be going into the vehicles as well, because those are residential burglaries and commercial burglaries there. But most of it is gonna be those thefts out of the stores. We can only call it a burglary in a... Like Lululemon, if they... We can show premeditation. And generally, we have to show that they use some sort of tool when they entered. If we can't, then the bulk of them get called grand thefts, and that's where the larceny theft would fall in.
So, these are people breaking into stores and taking stuff?
Not breaking in, just walking into stores and then walking out with stuff. Yeah. But if it's over, I think it's $900, it gets classified as a felony and becomes grand theft.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question. One of these years that are gonna rebuild Sir Francis Drake, what are we gonna... What sort of plans should we start making in anticipation of that?
With regards to what?
Traffic shifting from Sir Francis Drake on Magnolia and...
Oh, you're saying that the traffic will get so bad out there that people will divert?
Possibly. I don't know.
It's really a question for your public works and engineering, because when that happens, we're not gonna have to work speed anymore. It's gonna be a little slow. And generally, what we found is, even when like, we always get calls, "Hey, you need to go direct traffic." There's... It's really bad out there. Was there an accident? No, it's just a lot of cars. We're not smarter than the traffic signals. You know, I like to think we are. But they spend so much time timing those right to get the maximum flow of cars. If we go out there, it'll get worse, guaranteed every time. When I was a young officer, I tried it a few times. It was terrible. And it's really just bad practice, too, because it increases our liability. If we just direct one person the wrong way, we cause the collision.
Any questions?
Jim Robinson, 25 Ash, want to thank the chief for a great report and for the big print, so those that was over 60 can read, actually read the report. One concern I had was, and generally, I always feel safe when I'm in town in Corder Madera, except when my next-door neighbor let their German Shepherds out when I'm out walking. That's the only time I don't really feel safe. But I do have a concern about residential burglary. It shows that the value, I don't know what the number is, but the value has gone up 55% over the year previous. I know my next-door neighbor, I live at the top of Ash, and you think you're sort of out of the way. Nobody's gonna walk up that flight of stairs. We don't have stairs by the hillside. But he's had two residential burglaries in the last two years, and he has a very sophisticated security system. I have no security system in my house, which I shouldn't publicize, but I don't. In any event, I've been incredibly lucky. I have a great mailman who keeps an eye on my house. If they broke in my house, there's absolutely no valuables there, so they figure somebody's already got there before they did. That's my strategy. But I am concerned, I do believe years ago, we used to have a higher level of presence in Madera Gardens, specifically relative to patrol. And I like to ask the chief, if he's willing to answer the question, or at least address the question, is, "Do we really have a policy for the frequency for which we patrol neighborhood areas?" Now, a lot of times, that's how we catch criminals. We happen to be patrolling the neighborhood and see someone there. And then the second comment I had is about the Tamalpais overpass. I was traveling over that with my 17-year-old Lexus that was my car that I'd had for years and years in 2008 or '09 or whatever it was. And I was rear-ended at Tamalpais overpass. My car was totaled. But the interesting thing was that there were seven other cars involved in this accident. And when we analyzed that years ago, what we found about the Tamalpais overpass, which used to be the worst accident-related area in the Twin Cities area years ago, was because of the vertical approach of the overpass. It's not the traditional long overpass. And also, there's two lanes of traffic, and people don't realize that they have to get in the far-right lane to get into that turning movement to go northbound onto 101. And there's a lot of conflict that occurs there. If you ever drive it, you'll see that. And for many, many years, we suggested to Caltrans, it hasn't been done yet, is to simply identify that that lane to the far right is the 101 northbound lane. I mean, when you come out of the Town Center, they have enough intelligence to have done that to show people that you need to stay in the right lane if you want to go south on 101 or you want to go north on 101. I think that hopefully Caltrans could take some common sense approach and maybe take a look at that. But ultimately, that overpass could have to be redesigned and modified in order to make it a more of a safe traveling lane to get from one end of town to the other. Thanks again for your report. I appreciate it.
So, first with the Tamalpais overpass. I honestly think a lot of the reduction there is just the higher volume of traffic we have now. You know, 18 years ago, I think it... You could sit there and watch it, and there wouldn't be cars, and then one would zip over, kind of thing. I don't feel it's that way anymore. When I go by, at least, it's... I'm always just kind of stuck in traffic. It seems like no matter the time... it's, I'm always just kind of stuck in traffic. It seems like no matter the time. And that might explain why we only had four accidents there. Or I'm not going to sit here and say people are better drivers than they were 18 years ago, because I don't necessarily believe that. But in terms of police presence, I can tell you that the expectations of our officers are in their quote-unquote "free time" to drive the neighborhoods and do that. And they do try their best to do that. The problem is, as I've come here every year, and I, you know, I kind of, I don't have a 10-year trend to show you, but every year I go, hey, guess what? Our, our calls for service went up. And our amount of reports have gone up. And I've had these talks, I'm not sure if I've done it in Corder Madera, but it's always kind of that talk of whenever new municipal codes are outlaid and more expectations are made for us, it's going to pull us from doing other stuff. We can't just stop doing traffic enforcement, because that's what's keeping people safe. So I, I have an expectation of my officers to go out and do a certain amount of traffic enforcement. They have to respond to all these calls for service. And then, in their free time, they can drive around and essentially look for bad people. But what we've found is, you know, it adds up over time, to be honest with you, in terms of, you know, leaf blower ordinances or noise calls and all these things. Those are all things where they might be driving through a neighborhood or about to, and now they have to divert. And for the next 30 minutes, they're, they're dealing with a leaf blower. Or they're doing traffic, and they got to stop doing traffic and go do that, or deal with a call about a noisy neighbor. We're glad to do it, but our staffing isn't going up as we ask more and more of our officers. So I think that's really what you're, you're seeing. And with more and more reports having to be taken, it's, that creates a ton of extra time. It's not just like a quick call where they can drive by. It's an extra two hours out of their day for every one of those reports. And to give you more, a little bit of bad news, there's a federal implementation coming that we have to comply with at the end of the year called NiBRs compliant. And it has the potential of like doubling or tripling how many reports we have to take to be federally compliant, because they want everything reported now.
What'd you call it? NiBRs? Say it again?
NiBRs. N-I-B-R-S. Yeah.
What does that stand for?
I don't know. That's my captain. He's the one working on it.
Before we do those reports, what benefit does the police department get by cooperating with the feds?
Ah, well, it's a federal mandate. We have the potential of losing, like, our cops' funding, which is $300,000 a year.
Right. So that's the, that's the hammer.
That's the carrot. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, public comment?
Bob Bundy. I would wonder if the police department of the town of Corder Madera should encourage the major shopping centers, well, throughout the Central Marin Police Authority, but particularly in Corder Madera Village and the town center, to install more security cameras on, that monitor the parking lot. And I don't know if they're sophisticated enough to respond, you know, a move, a mobile or rotatable type camera that could respond to broken glass when somebody, you know, breaks the rear, rear window or not. But this, this would seem to be something that might help the security personnel in those centers.
I believe, if they haven't already, Corder Madera Town Center is looking into that. From our perspective, unless it's like a, kind of like a casino camera, where there's someone manning it and zooming and looking at everything, that would have value to us. If it's just stationary cameras where we can go back and look and go, oh, there's a car that broke into another car, and we can't see anything, it doesn't help prevent any of these crimes. And what we find is, it's not like, oh, we got this plate. The same car was driven through 12 times. And it's rental cars, it's stolen cars. There might be a little benefit to solving crimes down the road. But in prevention, it's really, you know, that, that manpower and attention. And I don't, I mean, I think it's, I'm not sure if they're considering something like that. We have asked if they can afford it to bring on extra security during certain times. We share our reports. We share a little more in-depth reports when we run them, when we're able to, like really specific days of the weeks and times, so they can kind of upstaff security. And that seems to have helped a little bit as well.
Any more public comment? Councilmember comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The next item will be the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. It will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Okay? Anybody want to poll anything? You do?
Thank you, Mayor Andrews. I, I need to poll 4B for a brief explanation.
Okay. Could I have a motion on everything but 4B? Or?
Move we approve 4A, C, D, and E.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. Comment about 4B, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Andrews and council. This item is to, was originally to appoint an additional person to the Climate Action Committee that we originally appointed 13 residents to at the February 4th Town Council meeting. But I found one more application that made its way into the spam filter folder. And I just wanted to make sure that since we had the opportunity to do this appointment, that we also not only appointed Ann Thomas, but also Blaine Corin. The agenda item says, appoint members or, member or members to the Climate Action Committee, but it didn't name names. And I wanted to make sure the name got in, in the record and that you understood the action that staff was requesting was to appoint two additional members to the committee instead of just one.
David, Eli, do you have any?
Fantastic.
Okay. Would either of you like to make a motion?
A public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment?
Then I would move item 4B.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. Okay. The next item is 6A, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number 09-2020, acknowledging receipt, receipt of a report made by the Fire Marshal of the Central Marin Fire Authority regarding annual inspection of central, of certain occupa-, occupancies required pursuant to section... One of the state laws.
Good enough.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews, mayors, members of the council. I'm here to present to you Senate, or a required reporting under Senate Bill 1205, which was authored by Hill from San Mateo. A little background on this, the state of California State Fire Marshal's office requires every fire department throughout the state to inspect certain occupancies annually. This includes every school, apartments, hotels, hospitals, certain institutions, which are your residential care facilities, at any place that may have a holding facility, so for any jails or so forth. So we've been required to inspect these annually. Unfortunately, within that law, there's never been a mandated reporting within that. It's all been under the honor system within the fire department. Post 2016 and 2017, we saw an uptick in residential fire fatalities in multifamily dwellings. With the biggest one that everyone remembers is the Ghost Ship Fire of December of 2016 that claimed the lives of 36 individuals. Since then, a Bay Area news group did an eight-year audit of several fire departments within the South Bay and East Bay to see what their records were on inspecting these occupancies. Throughout that audit, they found that a lot of these fire departments were not completing their annual fire inspections. Hence, Senator Hill would then drafted Senate Bill 1205 requiring, through the Health and Safety Code, that the fire departments now have to mandatorily report to their elected body what our percentage rate is of our mandatory inspections. So I'm here to present to you as a resolution, our inspections. So the Central Marin Fire Department conducts a pretty comprehensive fire inspection program where we guarantee, or we mandate that all of our annual fire inspections be conducted to all of our schools, all of our apartments, hotels, hospitals, residential care facilities, and so forth throughout our jurisdiction. Here within the town of Corder Madera, under the resolution, we have a total of six educational facilities that we inspect annually. And these are both private and public K through 12 schools. And within that, we're at 100% success rate. So we've, we've been inspecting them annually. And within our residential occupancies, which include our apartments, hotels, and motels within the town, we've got a total of 48 group R occupancies, and we are at a 100% success rate on having those inspected annually. With that, I present, I will open up to you any questions that you may have. And...
Yeah, next time.
We'll try.
I take it we don't have any warehouses or volunteer or self-made residences in, in town that we're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We do have some light industrial areas that do get inspected biannually, which is over off the Tamaul Vista side or Tamaul Plaza. One of the goals that we look for is if anytime we see any kind of residential living within a commercial property, that we go ahead and then turn that over to our code enforcement. And so that way, we can either, the goal for us as a fire department is not to kick people out on the street, but to make sure that they're living in safe places.
And we've only had one instance of that in the last couple of years?
Not through my tenure here. There may have been prior that I'm not aware of.
All right.
Ready?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment.
Public comment? Any motions?
I'd like to move the passage of resolution 09/2020.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I just say, Ruben, I just want to let you know, you're remarkably efficient and competent in what you do. We receive, I've received several, people say nice things about you. And one thing, let me say one nice thing about you. You're also incredibly efficient in your reporting. That was outstanding and took like four minutes. Like, outstanding. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I, may I ask, have, has, has either one of you had a follow-up meeting with the Tunnel Lane folks?
Not as of yet. That's on my agenda. It's on my list of many things. Is, and the goal is to go ahead and reach out to both the homeowners within Tunnel Lane and also the other stakeholders, which includes Marin County Open Space.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item is 6B, consideration and possible action to approve a letter to California Public Utilities Commission regarding its proposed proposal for new public safety power shut-off guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I'd like to thank Rebecca Vaughn, our Assistant Town Manager, for drafting this report. Town staff and council members received a correspondence in February from our local government liaison for the California Public Utilities Commission regarding the CPUC's public notice and proposal for new PSPS guidelines. That was published in January 2020. These documents are included in your report and attachments 2 and 3, respectively. Public Works Director RJ Suko, with the help of our mayor, drafted the proposed response letter based on the town's experience and observations during October's PSPS event. And I opened it to the council for review and discussion on our response. We have until February 19th to provide our comments on the proposal, and until February 26th to submit replies through the formal proceeding process.
Any comment?
Jim, did you draft this? I know RJ did a lot of the...
RJ did, and I added one paragraph, so...
Which paragraph did you add?
The one above, summary.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I don't have any problem with it at all.
And I apologize for the length, but there was enough issues.
I was considering, like, editing it on Friday when I saw it, and then I just gave up and said, you know, it's fine.
That's how I approached it, you know, with the one, okay. So...
The shot clock was you?
Hmm?
The shot clock was you?
Yeah, yeah.
That's nice. I think that was really a good addition.
That was an issue that I'd run across with solar companies, that they could get it installed, but they couldn't turn it on, so...
And I will just tell the council, as a lesson learned from that October event, all of our, all of our controlled intersections, traffic and light, lighted intersections now have battery backup, and they're installed for generator hookup. And we're going to do a generator test at the end of this month. And depending how that goes, we'll be purchasing generators. So in any future PSPS power outages, all of our controlled intersections will be controlled with lights.
What's the life of those batteries are expected?
It depends. So what we do is lessons learned, again, we put it on flash before it begins, and it would, it would probably get us anywhere from six to eight hours. And then at that point, we would use generator backup. And so right now, when we have a power outage, we deploy two Public Works maintenance employees. We will probably add a third. And their responsibility will be to basically keep all the pump stations and all of our generators running 24/7. And we're looking into your...
Right on.
The diesel, yeah, we're, exactly. So...
Renewable, truly renewable diesel.
I will have a report for you, sir.
Okay. And so all those backups will be diesel, we've standardized on diesel fuel?
We're looking at it right now. We're going to do some testing and see how they work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good enough. Public comment?
All right, Jim, I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to co-sign the letter with the Department of Public Works, with the Director of Public Works of our town.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Jimmy, you did a good job.
Okay.
Or maybe RJ.
Mostly RJ. I did one paragraph. So...
We'll tell RJ you did a good job.
Okay. The next item is discuss and consider reinstatement of the, of recreation coordinator classification, revisions to the job description, establishing a salary range of $5,200 to $6,321 per month. And this will be the first of two meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is a two-meeting business item per council policy. As you know, David Wilkinson is here, and he's been filling in as our quasi-director of Parks and Recreation. Again, we've given a conditional job offer. She has accepted. Her name is Ashley. She works in Santa Fel. She'll be starting on March 16th. During that time, we're hoping to have her a handful of days to help work with us and David and Rebecca to transition as she works her way over here. And in that process, we've done a lot of work of Rebecca and David on evaluating our staff. And so as you know, a majority of our staff are all part-time employees. We use multiple part-time employees to basically fill the position of coordinator. We're able to recruit and hire Aaron from Larkspur, who's really outstanding. And in evaluating, you know, the new, you know, basically chain of command within Parks and Recreation as Ashley works her way over here, we've done an evaluation of, should this position continue to be part-time or should it be full-time? We're recommending that it become full-time immediately. It's a fiscal impact of about $9,000 to this current year. It'll be an approximately $30,000 budget expenditure moving forward, additional to how we're handling now with part-time employees. We believe that'll be offset by the additional classes in programming that we'll receive in revenue, as well as five hours a week will be reimbursed by the City of Larkspur. It also begins that relationship with Larkspur from a programming standpoint, sharing the same person, and really providing services for both communities. And the shared services and potential, hopefully someday, consolidation discussion. And I also have David here, if he wants to jump in and answer any questions or give an overview of some of the duties we're looking at.
Thank you. The, the shared five hour, five hours a week that Todd was referring to is the developmentally disabled program, which actually started here in Corder Madera in the late 90s. And so the, the way I see it down the road is this is the first step toward possible consolidation, is to have Aaron, who's been in Larkspur and Corder Madera, continue the duties with the developmentally disabled program and probably bringing some of those programs over to Corder Madera. The, Todd handled just a few programs that Aaron has already started. She started a swordplay class on Tuesday afternoons, which right now only has six students, but it's part of the super cool summer school program. That was a massive program. So I think as word gets out, that program's going to grow. We have the skateboard park, the lessons of... We have the skateboard park, the lessons, we have full classes on that already. That begins, I believe, in about two or three weeks. And we're going to start a woodworking class that was too late for the winter program. But woodworking, when I was in Larkspur, was hugely popular in the school, so we anticipate growth in that program also.
Where will that be, Dave?
The woodworking is going to be in the Recreation Center, so over on that side area right there. The.
You're going to have lathes and other good stuff like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're, they're, the guy who does it, I don't know too much about him, to be honest, but the guy who does it is in several schools, so Erin coordinated all of that.
So it's over on the bar side?
Yeah, over by the bar area, that place where the Women's Club meets. For the fall, we are anticipating bringing in, bringing back our gymnastics program. There's a gentleman by the name of the Flying Dutchman who has several locations. Kid you not. That was, when I, when I was here in Corder Madera, a hugely popular program. And the other program that I believe is really going to grow is our ballet program, which is right now in our Inner Rhythms studio. And Erin helped coordinate that program through Super Cool Summer School. The person who started that program here in the 90s, Deanna Maske, left here, and she has opened up a studio in San Rafael, and she has well over 200 participants. So I think as word grows that she's back in Corder Madera, that that program will go. And there is room for growth in the Inner Rhythm Studio, which we just took over in April. And Erin has been, I've assigned Erin to get those programs going, get new programs in there. Before I finish, just off topic, I checked with Todd first, but I wanted to acknowledge last week, as I was observing programs that we started, the big band dance was started in the mid 80s, and it's gone through some highs and lows. And now we have the Lions Club. Bob Bundy helped coordinate with Christina Martin, who's one of our recreation assistants to try and get that program up. And we had over 100 people at last Wednesday's dance. There is a council member here who, I wish I would have had photos of him dancing, but the, the report back to me is he was dancing up a storm. So if you, I won't give him up. But I think if he ever wanted a second job, he could do that. The other program that, that was started actually by Jackie Branch in the mid 70s was our senior program, our bingo program. And Rebecca Vaughn coordinated a group of second and fourth graders from Neil Cummins to come over and sing a song and hand out Valentines to our seniors. And it just got me thinking how long that program has gone, and they're still here, and it's great. So Rebecca, you deserve a hand for that. One of the seniors came up to me afterward and with tears in her eyes said, you know, I haven't had a Valentine given to me in over 10 years. So that's kind of the effects that we, you know, our programming has that a lot of times we don't hear about. And then the Women's Club, they're having their annual rummage sale on March 7th. And that's, I don't think they get enough kudos because they, the Lions Club built the building, but the Women's Club assisted in that in the 50s. And that's something I think you as a council should be proud of, that the continuation of the programs that have gone on and on and on and continue to flourish. So I just wanted to.
Do you happen to know the donation date for the March 7th?
I do not.
Is it the Friday before, or is it the Friday?
Rebecca made it. Okay, yeah.
We're going a little off topic, but.
Anyway, so that's, I just wanted to acknowledge that. If you had any other questions on the topic at hand, feel free to ask.
So again, this is the culmination of.
Go ahead.
I would just, this is the culmination of the work of really Rebecca and David on the Parks and Rec Department. And I'm just really excited at where we're headed. And so again, we're asking three things to consider tonight. The reinstatement of the recreation coordinator classification, the amended job description of this position, and then the compensation schedule that has been reviewed by a human resources officer. We would start this position at $5,200 a month, and we would come back to you at the second meeting for approval of those three recommended actions.
Now, in terms of park and rec, how many facilities are you currently working in? I know there's a rec center.
Recreation Center, the Inner Rhythm Studio, which is in.
Park Madera.
Park Madera, Neil Cummins Gym.
Okay.
And then we have, we're in charge of the park facilities, Town Park, the Cove Park, I don't know what the official name of that, tennis courts, we have Town Park Tennis Courts, we have the Granada Tennis Courts, Skateboard Park. I may be missing one or two, but it's.
Gunkalo?
Well, those are all the mini parks, yes, yeah.
By the way, thank you for your work. And I don't, these, I would like somebody to reassure me though, Todd, you might be the right person, that both these three specific business items, as well as the offer extended to the person who's starting whenever she is, is consistent with our town, at least giving us the option of fully consolidating with Larkspur at some point. In other words, is that all wrapped up in a larger strategy? I know we haven't discussed it, we haven't made an agreement, but I don't want to, I don't want, you guys have to, I want somebody to reassure me, both these three steps and that hiring would not later be an impediment to doing that.
It is not, and it actually sets the stage for it. And we've worked closely with our partners in Larkspur on it. If you look at a consolidated Parks and Rec Department between the two cities, the city and town, the top three positions are in place.
Okay.
And with, with, with relationships for both the city and town of comfort and trust and, you know, building. So this does not hinder it in any way.
And the, the offer you extended as well to the other, the one who's accepted already, that's also consistent with the larger plan, or at least the option?
Yes, if we were to consolidate, the director would come from Corder Madera.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't expressing an opinion about the thing. I just didn't want us to be in the effort of trying to handle the immediate, forgetting the medium and longer-term strategy. Okay, so I'll, oh, we got to do public comment. Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Public comment? Now, do we need to do three motions, or can we just do one?
No, no motions. This is just providing direction, and now we'll come back to you for approval at the next meeting.
All right. Go for it.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
37, 38 years ago, before I was married, just before I was married, I came this close to taking a second job with Arthur Murray Dance Studios in suburban Washington, DC.
According to my sources, that makes perfect sense, in watching you. Thank you.
And now we'll take town manager and council reports.
I'm going to give my time to our Planning and Building Director, Adam Wolf, who will provide an update.
I am so scared you're about to say our number. Are they tripling? Is that the deal? Are they?
Licorice?
Yeah.
To end, on a happy note, no.
I mean, the RENA numbers have been a bane on our town for a decade.
Yeah, though I, we don't have any RENA numbers yet.
Oh, okay.
No, we will find out, probably not even for another year. But I think I did want to communicate that I did attend the ABAG Special General Assembly on February 7th. They had a.
Taking one for the team there.
A meeting. I attended with staff representation from the Marin County Planning Directors Group, was Elise Simonian. No, no vote.
You should have.
They let me, well. And also, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that Pat Eklund, as well, is representing the Marin County Elected Officials Group, MCCMC. And I know she provides, I think she provides some summaries of the meetings that she attends, probably at length, and I'm sure you read them all, but she is providing some good information in there about things that are going on in the world of ABAG and RENA and Planbaria and all the projections and, and sort of policy direction that is coming out of our regional government and Sacramento, to the extent that it is coming out there as well. But the meeting was helpful. I mean, it basically was a meeting that provided a snapshot or a sort of foreshadowing, I guess is a better way of saying it, of the upcoming housing element cycle that we will be required to implement, we're required to sort of go through the next housing element preparation and then adoption by December of 2022. And so in advance of that, there's a gearing up of basically a couple of things that I think they wanted to communicate to all of us at the meeting, which all lead to, yes, the point that numbers are going to be very much higher than they have been in recent, in the last cycle. So for example, Southern California areas, their regional governments, they've seen tripling of the RENA numbers, housing units that are expected to be built for each jurisdiction. It's based on state, the state's determination about growth projections and whatnot, and those are handed from the state down to the regional governments. And they disseminate based on a methodology that is currently being determined by the ABAG MTC Methodology Committee. They're in the process, and again, that's Pat and Elise Simonian from Marin County, on determining how to distribute the number, which has yet been given to them, but how to distribute the number of housing units to each of the jurisdictions. Couple of things to note, there's a much greater emphasis on social equity this year, or this cycle, which is about sort of locating housing units in areas which have, are called high resource areas, meaning good schools and other factors that are deemed to be sort of beneficial for all income groups. And as I already mentioned, higher expected total regional housing need, there's expanded HCD oversight on methodology and allocation. So HCD plays a more, they have more powers granted to them in terms of making sure that the, they can actually appeal the methodology that is provided to the, to the local governments. And there's also a greater emphasis on, and this gets to some of the equity, but it's affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so there's a bigger element, then policies need to be geared towards ensuring that each jurisdiction is sort of fulfilling those goals. In all, I think what it means is that there's going to be a much greater effort required of staff in order to make sure that we are implementing a housing element that complies with state law and that incorporates all of the, the housing numbers that we're going to be given. And more time needed in advance of actually completing and getting that document in shape. So, you know, I, I just wanted to, there'll be a lot more on this. One of the things we've already started, and this sort of segues into one other piece of information, is, as you are aware, we've applied for grant funding and have started to use that for the objective design and development standards, which I think is helpful. The connection is that we may need to go to sort of a more by right housing model, which means that there isn't discretionary review for multifamily housing. But if we have good development standards and design standards in place, that may make it facilitate housing projects that the town is, wants to see, or is more, at least from a design perspective, is, is able to accommodate. And so we've started doing that with the county. There was an article in IJ yesterday, in fact, I don't know if any of you saw it, talking about, it was sort of termed as the county's housing standards, but it really was an article about all of the jurisdictions working on this project together. And in that regard, we're, there will be a sort of an open house and an information-sharing session on March 19th at the, our community center, where it's sort of the road show to kick off the objective design and development standards project. So not directly tied to the RENA and this ABAG General Assembly, but it's, there's a lot of this, the housing conversation, I think, is sort of going to be ramping up in the next couple of years. And I just wanted to make you aware that we can come back at a future time if there are specific pieces of this that you'd like information, more information on. But I just wanted to tip you off to that. And, and also, yes, there, there is some, you know, through Pat's summaries and other information, there's a lot of information out there.
Will that March 19th meeting be in the evening?
It is. It's seven to nine. And it's, there's four, there will be the last of four countywide workshops on this. I guess we're calling it workshops, but it's meant to just explain to the general public and get some feedback, but explain to the general public about why this project is happening, what are objective development standards, what are the state laws that are sort of trying to respond to? And the consultant group will be there, and I will be there, obviously, and some of my colleagues as well, will be there to answer, answer questions. And again, it's the last of four. There's one in Novato, San Rafael, the San and Selmo, and then Corder Madera.
Any other questions, Tom?
Actually, not a question, but I'd like to make, we don't call for public comment on this sort of thing.
No, but I want to ask Adam a question before we go to comments.
Okay.
In terms of, given what little information they probably provided you with how RENA will be assigned, how are they factoring environmental risk? Or are they, I'm hearing it again.
No, I mean, it is one of the factors as to technically how they are doing that is a different, is a separate question. And again, the numbers haven't come in, so, but I will say, it's one of the things definitely, I think this council has emphasized in the past, I've been communicating that to our representative, my representative. I encourage you also to speak to Pat Eklund about that, and she can, you know, she sits on the Methodology Committee. But at the General Assembly, I, you know, that was a specific comment that I made to the ABAG representative about specifically how are you tying together housing growth and, you know, things such as sea level rise and wildfires and so on. And it's not entirely, entirely clear. I think they're well aware of it, of the issue, but it needs to become, in my opinion, much more front and center in a sort of an honest conversation about how to address those, those issues.
Any other council questions? Any public comment on this?
I do, I have a question, but it's, one of the reports that you sent to us concerned the hotel ordinance. Is that going to be next in what you are discussing, or no?
No.
It was just an update that came out in our packet. You, you have a quizzical look in your face.
No, sorry, I didn't.
It was one of the items in our packet, at least it was in my packet.
Wasn't that in the.
That was the last meeting.
That was the last meeting.
Oh, maybe it was left over.
Never mind.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, may I say something? So first of all, thank you for the reporting, and thank you, Todd, for giving an opportunity for, there's very little more important in my own mind, sitting on the town council for some years now, than the imposition of land use regulations by the larger governing body. We have all experienced our brothers and sisters in other councils, both locally and further field, who have extremely strong opinions about kind of pro-development or anti-development. And I think as far ahead of it as you can get, Adam, in terms of like giving us both what's coming down, and secondly, options available to us. So when you perceive there's a change coming, it would be useful to have concoct, if you will, strategies, like the one you're doing with the objective standards, so that if this town council, which I will not be on at the time, but if they want to impose a more local or restrictive standard, they can do so. Alternatively, if they want to encourage more development, they can do so, but that we maintain some kind of local control to the extent we can.
I appreciate that. And I, and I think one of the, it reminds me, one of the, I think the biggest pieces of this housing discussion, which we're, in my, which I don't see that we're, that we're there yet, but maybe relatively soon within the, toward the end of this year, is going to be discussing the actual opportunity sites. And I think that's going to be a robust conversation. And I think having the development and design standards in place, or at least developed to the point where they've, we have input, we have a technical advisory committee working on those, they will come back through multiple, you know, commission and council. But having those in place, I think will, I'm hopeful that will be helpful in, in sort of taking that next step to talking about where housing in the next eight years actually is reasonable, feasible, appropriate.
And then, I'm sorry, may I say one other thing, Mr. Mayor? So the second thing, though, Adam, is I'd like you to reflect and then advise Todd and/or the town council or something, whether you think Corder Madera should reconsider joining the town council or something, whether you think Corder Madera should reconsider joining A-BAG again. I don't know if it would give you a voice we don't have, I don't know if we care, or it's indifferent, but it's the sort of thing that, you know, the town council took a stand some years ago, and they, they're out, and they still, we still go to things, but maybe it's, maybe it's time to reconsider that. You don't have to respond, but if there's a, there's got to be a process, and that the town council will have to like figure out whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. I don't really have an opinion, guys, but I think it's something we should consider.
Every time I see Pat Eklund, she asks me when we're going to rejoin.
My only question would be, how much does it cost per year?
It's nominal.
And secondly, how big is their staff, and are we going to take on a portion of their pension liability? You know? So, off topic, but...
Actually, I was going to suggest that you take public comment again, because you had an additional conversation.
Okay. No, no. No, okay. Nobody wants to talk. All right. Any council, manager report, that's it? Any council member reports?
I have three quick things. TAM and telecommunications and Safe Roots to School. In the TAM category, interesting, we call it the Technical Committee, the Funding Programs and Legislative Executive Committee meeting, had a preview of something that's coming this summer, which is a Marin-Sonoma bike share program. About nine different providers of bike share, this is volume, you know, they're going to buy 300 electric bikes and station them around towns and cities in the, in the counties, the two counties. They evaluated about nine providers, they selected the best one, and they're working through the final details to have a group come into our communities. It's called Gotcha, and they have a beautiful electric bike that will, and all they're going to ask us for is some locations where we can sacrifice a few parking spaces for slots where these would go, so that people can come and with a program on their phone, borrow a bike, take it somewhere and bring it back. That's thing one there. There was a good update on alternative fuels program and EVs promotion. TAM's essential approach is provide technical assistance, guidance, push, and ways to bring in other money from elsewhere, so that they don't have to put very much money into the expansion of electric vehicles, but that is something that is going to be on the agenda this year. Let me jump to Safe Roots to School. A lot of compliments on the High Canal work and other around town. A project that is definitely of high interest to the elementary schools here is the intersection right over here on Pixley and Redwood Avenue. We've started to make some improvements, there's a plan to finish those improvements this summer. High visibility, a lot of attention, near misses, a lot of anxiety among parents, so that is not to be dropped from our list of priorities. And the final one is I attended a meeting of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, which, as you know, has been planned to be made obsolete, or I would say to, to be put out of its existence, and the plan has commenced to do that this summer. Transferring the responsibilities to the Marin GSA, which is a staff-led joint powers authority that handles streetlights and a variety of other things, will save some money, maybe $100,000 a year, once we do that, and still continue the MCCC services, which are so great in our community. That is all.
A few quick items from me. Larkspur is officially out at CMSA, so that happened, their seat was closed, it was not given to somebody else, so that is in line with our wishes. The Chamber of Commerce is holding a mixer tomorrow at the Fieldwork Brewery from 5:00 to 7:00.
They've got good beer.
So, yeah, Chamber of Commerce mixer at Fieldwork tomorrow, very exciting. I'll be there, 5:30 to 7:00, it's in town center. The League of Cities is urging us to support SB 54 and AB 1080, which relate to the circular economy and plastic pollution reduction. They sent me like a form letter that we can use as basis, so I've forwarded that to the mayor and our town manager, so they can work on that if they are so inclined. They have identified Mark Levine, our assembly member, as a priority assembly member for that, so perhaps it might be in our interest to follow through there. And the last thing is, we had a good meeting of our Resiliency Advisory Committee, what, last week or earlier this week, which is the committee that's developing our climate adaptation plan, so that is continuing apace. That is all.
Couple of things, first of all, I appreciate the mayor for covering for me. I couldn't make the Central Marin Police Authority meeting, I had a work emergency that came up, thank you, Jim, for handling that. I attended the county, rather, the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee meeting. I'm sorry, I forgot my notes, I'll report if you don't mind on that the next, it's not, just came out off the top of my head. I know the housing bill failed, and then there was...
SB 50.
SB 50, and then I, I'm sorry, I can't remember what the aftermath of that was, but I'll report on it next, next meeting. And there were no meetings for Marin Clean Energy or the other one I'm a part of, so those are all my reports.
I did attend the police council meeting and the fire council meeting, and we did honor Sloane Bailey at the police council meeting for his service. We also approved audits in both of those meetings for both organizations, and we had a discussion about pensions, particularly in the police program, and you will be hearing more about that at a future meeting, because we're going to establish a plan to start paying down our pensions for Central Marin Police Authority. And I also ended my term as chairman of the police authority, and Catherine Way is taking over. And that was it, thanks.
And to sort of give a bit more color to the issue with the pensions is, okay, the police department represents three towns, okay? The fire department represents two towns. Corder Madera, our revenue stream is relatively dependent on sales tax revenue, which is more volatile than housing, than property taxes or parcel taxes. Our fellow JPA members are very much dependent on parcel taxes and property taxes. So sort of the issue is, is how can we, when sales tax revenue is bountiful, set aside enough money to pay pensions, realizing that sooner or later, we're going to have lean years, and not do it in such a way that it works in conflict with the capabilities of our JPA partners? So that's sort of the issue that's come up and how we're going to address it, so. Any other questions? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.